We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order for the October 20th meeting of the City Council. Could you please stand and salute the flag with me? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I think Councilman Ramirez requested item number five point one, I think. Five point one to be pulled for a future meeting. When was that? When did you want that back? Do you want it?
I would like to scroll through the budget.
Okay, so we'll hold off till next fiscal year.
Okay. Is the rest of the council okay with the agenda? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the changes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded to accept the agenda. Roll call, please.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Singleton?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I also vote aye. Okay, we'll go to awards, presentation, appointments, and proclamations. Certificate of appreciation for Sergeant Roush. Is Sergeant here? Oh, there he is.
Is it on?
Yes.
Yes, it is. Okay. On behalf of Colinga City Council, Mayor and all councilmen, as a certificate of appreciation for your outstanding performance with the Colinga Police Department Fire and Ice Narcotics Operation.
Thank you very much.
Scott, would you like to say anything?
Oh, we talked about it last council meeting. So, just thank you very much for the recognition of the hard work. It was truly a team effort from the patrol people when they need somebody stopped. They were on it, having the go-to people stopping. Chief Blevins having the foresight when we were in a budget crunch to put me into the DEA so we could have the deep pockets to make something happen. I think last week we talked about the investigation was probably just over a quarter million dollars is what it cost. So, that city manager, quarter of the way through, we made a little game change. The city manager understood the complexity of it. And then, of course, my partner, Sean Riley over at the DEA, who worked just as many hours as I did on this, so half of those goes to him. But thank you very much for that.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we have the presentation of the new Toyota Prius commuter car for the Colinga Police Department. Chief?
Good evening, council, staff, and the community. As you recall, when I first started, I was tasked to hire officers. And retention and recruitment was challenged. And I want to thank all of you, council, because you seen the issue and your department was suffering. I came on when I started, I had 12 officers, including me. Today, I have 21 officers. So, these new officers, which are two behind me right now, back in February, you authorized the city manager through a resolution to apply for two grants with CERA, the Risk Management, and then also with San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution for electric cars. So, I think about a few weeks ago, we had five Prius delivered, hybrids, electric and gas, to the PD. And we issued them out to those officers that live outside the city. And so, definitely the morale, it makes a big difference because they're not, you know, it's less in their pocket in purchasing gas. The wear and tear is not of their car. So, it's great. They come to work in their own personal car. They pick up a Prius, they go back if they live in Visalia or Fresno and Porterville. And then they return on their Friday, they take their personal car back. So, it just worked out great. I have the car parked outside and I have these two officers who are assigned cars here to, if you want to ask any questions when they're outside to show you. And I know that Councilmember Horn wanted to say some few words, too.
Yeah, so far, I've talked to five of the officers that are actually in use of those vehicles. And I want to do a comparison of costs of how much they're actually saving. And right now, it's on average is costing each officer $50 per week to be able to drive back and forth to work now versus anywhere from 700, 800 up to 1,400 per month to be able to drive back and forth. So, it's saving them quite a bit of money and it's boosted their morale as well. They're a lot happier.
So, with that, Mayor, if you want to take a little, just a couple of minutes break. And I'd love to show the public the new cars and the officers will be out there answering any questions.
Okay, we'll take about a 10-minute break and everybody can go outside and then look at the cars, so.
All right. Okay, Council, Mayor, just to finish it up, we're in the process of putting the charging stations in the parking lot at the PD. So, that'll be done soon. Also, just to let you know, currently, these vehicles get 55 miles per the gallon. Of course, if you add the electrical part, which is give you 25 to 30, you could look at about 80 miles a gallon. So, it's a huge cost savings. So, with that, I want to thank you again for these vehicles.
Next, we'll go to citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the City Council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to lecturing, identify themselves, and use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the council tonight and all items will be referred to staff for a follow-up. Citizens' comments submitted in writing to the city clerk by 5:00 on the day of the council meeting shall be distributed to the city council and included in the record, however they will not be read. Is there anybody who would like to address the council? Hilda? How are you today?
Good, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and, oh, Sean instead of Marissa. I'm just here on behalf of the Colinga District Library just to say, give out a shout-out and a thank-you to Billy Long Isaac Rodriguez Emil Diaz de Leon, the fireman that came for, during Fire Prevention Week at the Colinga District Library for Story Hour. They took time off to come in and come and visit during Story Hour time, which was from 10:00 to 11:00. They brought their truck and they taught the kids. They allowed the little ones, they're little guys, they're not like pre-K, they're just not even in school yet, to, you know, look at the truck. One little boy was excited because he got to blast the horn. They taught them, is it stop, drop, and roll? Yeah, stop, drop, and roll. So, they really had a good time and I just want to give a big shout-out. Thank you, Chief, for allowing them to come and visit our library. I know we're always pushing and to get partner with the organizations here in town, city, police, you know. So, I was, we were happy. Our children's librarian, Gina, will give a shout-out and she wants to do a little, probably something in the newspaper, just thanking them with pictures. And this, next weekend for Colinga Fest, the library will be there at the Colinga Fest decorating pumpkins. As of currently, we're still looking to purchase pumpkins. Seems like pumpkins aren't anywhere to be found. So, we'll come up with a different idea. So, if you have any little ones, just come by our little booth and it's all free. They can just come and hopefully, the last time we had real pumpkins, hopefully, we can get some, you know, find some real pumpkins this time. But as of now, I just want to say thank you to the fire department for doing such a wonderful job with our little ones because you know how little ones can be so impressed that they want to become firefighters or they want to become policemen, so thank you and thank you again, Chief.
Thank you, Hilda.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Scott?
Mayor, council, Scott Netherton, Colinga Chamber of Commerce. We got a lot coming up. First, I wanted to give, again, props to the fire department for their event, open house last Saturday. I got to go by and take some friends that hadn't been in Colinga since June of 1986 when we graduated. And we went by and let them take a look at the facility. And they had the little kids in the little turnouts dragging hoes and probably doing what they normally do. Let them do all the work for them for the week, but the kids were loving it and seeing Murphy. And they had really a good time, Chief. You had a good turnout. Colinga Fest coming up on the 29th from 12:00 to 9:00 in the Plaza. We're currently sitting at about 76 vendors. Got a lot. Last year, we had 42 and we had a good turnout with people and we're almost doubling that. So, we're really excited for it. I wanted to also remind you that tomorrow at Keck Park, they're having the Down Syndrome Awareness Event at 3:21 PM. I know some people like it's a very odd number, but it's, that's what sets the Down Syndrome apart is that 21st chromosome that they've tripled it. And so, that's why it's starting at 3:21. But if anybody's available to be there, thanks to Westwood Machine Shop, we got a couple of little train cars that were built. I'm dragging them along on my golf cart right now. We'll have them out there for the kids to ride around in and hopefully, some of you can join us. Also, with Halloween following on Monday this year, Marissa asked me to go around to a lot of our businesses and see who would be available to provide a safe trick-or-treat walk-around for the kids and with all the businesses. And I started making the list and I'm sitting at about 34 businesses right now. So, over the weekend, I'll get a map together and a list of which ones are participating and get that, start getting that out. But a lot of things coming up, so I appreciate you all and any questions? All right, thank you, guys.
Chamber stout, staying busy, aren't you?
Oh, staying busy.
Okay, thank you. Mary?
Mary Jones, District 1 resident. Colinga has been known for a lot of things through the years. We've been innovative, we've been leaders, we've been followers. But most of all, we have been doing unusual things ever since we started horn-toed races. With the water situation, when I was listening during Candidates Night, I was struck with the idea that we really need to go big. This is not a short-term thing. This is going to go on and on. And I think it's time that someone seriously consider creating, starting, whatever, a true reclamation project for our water that we do use. I know it's expensive, but that's what we're looking at. Southern California is considering desalination program. I don't know what system we use right now, but I do know that in 1964, Glenn Markison submitted Colinga to the U.C. system that was working on osmosis programs and various things at that time. And the study found that our situation here with our natural water would be fabulous to use for a system that leached out the bad and made it usable water because we do have water, it's just not potable. So, it's time. So, I started digging and I know that you are all, or some of you anyway, are good researchers yourself. But I did make some copies in case you can't fall asleep in the coming weeks. I made some copies of, this one is from the EPA, Best Practices to Consider for Evaluation of Water Conservation and Efficiency as an Alternative for Water Supply Expansion. So, there is that. We either need to conserve or expand. We have conserved the heck out of everything. I have friends and relatives who visit from other places and they are appalled. And they say, "How can you do this? Where's your vegetable garden? Where's this? What do you do for that?" I shrug my shoulders and say, "That's the way it is." And then they say, "Well, how about those people?" I guess they haven't gotten the message because their lawn's still green. But it's hard and it's not going to get any easier. So, I beg you to look at some of the alternatives because we are already conserving down to the bones. We can't, and it's not, it's not sustainable. So, we have to expand. So, I want you to look, and I had other things that I was going to bring, but I thought this would be good to start with as far as just considering what we have, what we're doing. There were a couple of mentions of sources for grants and things for people that need to.
Mary, I'm sorry. That's all your time. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else?
Good, good. Thank you for, Jim Jacobs, I live at two-nine-nine North Sixth Street, Vice Chair Planning Commission. Just a couple thoughts. I know you guys are going to vote on the conditional use application for the cultivation of marijuana that I think the Planning Commission voted no on. And I just kind of wanted to reiterate, you know, the Planning Commission, as I see it, I don't want, I'm not speaking for everybody there, but I know we work at the pleasure of you. I remember the first day I was voted in, and I'll never forget that. But I believe that the Planning Commission has a charter to protect property values and public safety. And one of those things, water comes into account very much. People can't water the yards, property values drop, whatever. And then the thought of using water for commercial cultivation, municipal water, it's, it has a rub to it, whether it's cannabis, corn, or whatever. I don't think that's been a real popular thing until lately. So you've got citizens that are speaking about that. I'm hearing it. A lot of the people are hearing it. Why are we allowing commercial growth with our municipal water when we're all being cut back? And that project, to me, is just another one of those projects that's using more of our water. And it's nothing, there was nothing wrong with that plan. I mean, if we had water, it would have gone through like everything else. But I don't want, you know, the council to think, you know, that something against cannabis or anything like that. It's, that's not the case in this matter. It's just, there's no water. I would recommend, like what Mary said about maybe drilling for more water. I think everybody would be up to an additional fee on their water bill if we had extra water, some way of bringing it in. I would be for it as a citizen to supplement while we get off that canal, because we are so dependent on it. So, and that's pretty much it. Normally, I'm up there. It's kind of hard being down here, but I appreciate what you guys do, and I understand the tough part of your job, and it is a pleasure working underneath you. And the Planning Commission, too, I think, has a job that's not really spoken, but it's helped protect you guys to some degree, because I know you don't know zoning and, and the planning and the general plan that we go through, and that's our job to make sure everything fits within it. And, you know, there's, there's some other things we look at that you might not see that, but you do have the final word, and we all do respect that, so just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else?
Bill Lewis, Madison Street. Just pointing out something, I walk through Keck Park every morning, and up until about three weeks ago, it was really dry. And now, it seems like they're watering every day. And I know this is Parks and Rec, but has something changed? Because it just seems like every day now they're watering, it's, it's almost mush and mud that we're walking through. So I just wondered if there's been a change in philosophy, because before that, they were just dry. So I'm just curious.
We'll check on it. Thank you. Anybody else? Nathan?
Good evening, council and mayor. Tonight, I want to talk about item number six-point-one relating to the water shortage regulations related to businesses. I see that this item was brought forth by the Mayor Protim Singleton, related to one-day or no-day watering for commercial, industrial, and institutional water users, and that the place highlighted in the staff report, known as Resolution Number four-one-zero-eight, updated per Singleton, October twenty-twenty-two, states alternative option based on future agenda item states, the only option that I can find in there is option one, no outdoor watering for commercial, industrial, and institutional water customers. And the thing is, we keep hearing about how water is only supposed to be used for health and human safety. Well, I seen a video that had an interview with Councilman Atkinson and Superintendent Lori Villanueva, where she made an excellent point, probably the best point I've ever heard so far about the use for water and health and human safety, to curb the real threats of valley fever. Our city has dealt with valley fever injuries ever since I moved here. My brother had it. It's nasty. What she said is true. Pretty much every time the dirt is moved or disturbed, we see an increase in valley fever. I actually talked to the CDC one time. They were pulled over, and I talked to them, and they said when that Taco Bell went up, they had three-hundred-and-fifty-three cases of, of valley fever. And I said, "Wow," I said, "How do you know?" They said, "We go to your hospital, and we got those results from them." And they said, "It's a hotspot for valley fever." I was like, "Wow, interesting." The state understands this. In fact, they agree with it. It's so bad that even the state decided to remove certain inmates from the prison, based on the threat of the valley fever to them. I believe this is a real threat to society, and I really want to thank Lori for coming forward and doing that interview to discuss how the valley fever directly affected her. I know that health problems and things that go on, people are very private, but I think that the citizens need to realize this. This is definitely a public safety issue that can turn into a public safety emergency if we leave our grounds uncovered. And I don't think plastic tires is going to be a solution. We've done similar things in the past where people had cut up tires and put them out there, but the smell of that was pretty nasty. Some of the people had said, "Hey, those things don't smell very good." We need that water. We needed it yesterday. So I personally disagree with stopping all outdoor watering based on public safety issues surrounding valley fever and the other particulates found in the soil. There's all kinds of stuff in the soil. I mean, we don't, you know, we had, we had asbestos a while back.
Nathan, I'm sorry.
No problem. I'm just saying, use the taxpayers' money for smart meters.
Nathan, I'm sorry.
Use them for water. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Nathan. Anybody else? Okay, we'll go to public hearings. Council consideration of an appeal by S.T. Green Company of a, of a Planning Commission decision related to conditional use permit application CUP twenty-zero-two. Sean?
Thank you, Mayor, council. This item is the council's consideration and approval of an appeal filed by the applicant, S.T. Green Company, for a conditional use permit application, CUP twenty-two-zero-two, which was denied by the Planning Commission on September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, and basically, the council further adopting Resolution four-one-two-one. On July twenty-sixth of this year, the Community Development Department received a conditional use permit application for the development of an indoor cannabis cultivation facility within the existing structures located at nine-ninety Cody Street, which is formerly the, the formal West Hills College District Office. Staff reviewed the application, prepared the necessary reports, and recommended approval to the Planning Commission. On September twenty-seventh, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing to consider the conditional use permit application, and after discussion and receiving public comment, the Planning Commission voted two, and two to three, in favor of approving the application. The number of votes received to approve the project application did not meet the numbers needed to pass, therefore, the application was denied. During the public hearing, there were concerns from the commissioners and the public about the water situation related to permitting this facility. We did provide some information regarding the video from the meeting, as well as at the, the project report was attached as a link, so you're, the council was able to view the staff report, as well as the video from the meeting. Section nine-dash-six-point-one-one-five of the Planning and Zoning Code authorizes any applicant agreed by a decision by the Planning Commission may be appealed to the city council. The city council decisions are final. And so the applicant filed an appeal with the clerk within the required ten calendar days of the date of that action. The code states that the council shall use the same standards and criteria required for the original decision to review the appeal. The council may adopt the same decision and findings that were originally approved, or make a decision based on different findings. Staff has provided a link to the original agenda item from the Planning Commission meeting, so that the council may review the project and present, that was presented to the Planning Commission. We also attached a copy of the appeal request from the applicant as well. In the sake of time, I won't go into excruciating detail on the project components, as this was done through a public hearing process. But if there's any questions regarding the, the scope of the project, the applicant is here as well, AJ, if you have any questions directly for the applicant. But again, there is a copy of the report that was filed with the Planning Commission, as well as the appeal to the city council to reverse the decision of the commission. So with that, Mayor, we can open the public hearing, and any questions?
Okay, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody would like to talk on the public hearing, either for or against this? Go ahead. Mary?
Mary Jones, District One. As I understand it, from what I've read, this facility would use only as much water as about one household for the whole time, because they recycle, recycle the water through. So any arguments made about water usage are kind of ludicrous, in my opinion, and I'm not fully educated, so, you know, no, no offense to the people who decided that. But it seems to me that it's more of a, a net to defend their choice to say no. The property values are already, the, the, the plan for this facility are consistent with the other facilities in the same area. It's all cannabis-related business, so there's not really going to be any degradation that I can see of any property. So I don't understand any real reason for denying this application, as it would bring industry and jobs and utilization of space that's vacant. That's just my opinion, but there you go.
Thank you very much.
And just to clarify to the council, in terms of water use, the facility, based on the application, was expected to use two-hundred-thousand gallons of water in a year, because it fully recycles its water, which is less than an acre foot of water. An acre foot of water is three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-one gallons, so it's, it's, you know, significantly less than an acre foot of water.
Is there anybody else, sir?
Hi, everyone. Okay, so, okay, so, based on the exact number that I, that we calculated, we are going to have, we're going to use like hundred-seventy-four-thousand gallon a year, which is going to be zero-point-five acre foot a year. It's, it's way less than an acre foot. And also, so basically, when we reclaim the water, so out of like, imagine that one-thousand-one-hundred-seventy-one gallon, we are going to discharge three-hundred-ninety-one gallon, and then we're going to keep like four-hundred-seventy gallon a day. So, almost, I'm, I'm giving you the approximately number. So if you times three-hundred-sixty-five days, it comes out to one-hundred-seventy-four-thousand gallon per year, which the number that I, that me and Mr. Sean gave to the commissioners last time was two-hundred, which is, I rounded up on my business plan, and I put a two-hundred-thousand just in case, but it's going to be less than that. Plus, the three-hundred-ninety-one gallon a day that we're discharging every day, we're not wasted. We're going to use it for our, for irrigating our landscaping that we have it. We're going to filter it again, and we use it for our landscaping. So basically, we're not, we're not going to throw it out. That's the thing. And then the other thing is, we are going to make these jobs, and also, we're going to pay like more than fifty, fifty, five-thousand dollar a year just for the tax, based on the canopy that we have, is seven dollar per square foot for canopy, and also, the licensing revenues and all that stuff. So I just wanted to give you, just correct that number. The exact number is less than, it's half acre foot, which is going to be less than two-thirds of the single-family house.
Okay, how many jobs with this?
Pardon me?
How many jobs with this?
At least twenty, just twenty involved in that facility. So let's say we're working with the other people in this city, so it's going to add up.
Are you going to try to hire local?
Of course, definitely. There is no choice, because the best option that we have to hiring the local people, that's, that's the best option for us, and we're not going to use any other, like out of like, on local, yes.
Okay, if, if this does go through, when would you start taking applications? Do you have any idea?
Pardon me?
When would you start applications?
Like that?
For jobs and stuff, if this does go through?
So after, we know what's the situation with, with the local licenses, we got to basically apply for a couple construction permits, like it's, it's a minor things for the tenant improvement and stuff like that. And then after that, we're ready to go maybe three months, four months, if, if everything goes well.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, for the, do you have any estimate on what it, how much water use you're going to have for the second year? Is it going to be, is it going to be less?
Yes, because first time you fill up the water is going to be one-hundred-sixty-seven gallon, one-thousand-six-hundred-seventy-six gallon. And the next year, you know, the first time you want to fill it out is going to, is going to be like more than the next time. So the only, the hard part is the first time. Yes, it's going to be lower and lower every time. I mean, every year.
Adam, do you have any questions? Okay. Okay, is anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Is there anybody else would like to say anything? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Council, what would you like to do?
You know, I'm glad that we have backup, like the Planning Commission, and this is nothing to go against any decisions or nothing like that. I believe everybody, they're, they're a business, as much as anybody else here is a business, flower shops are businesses, anything has businesses, and I think they have the, the right and opportunity to, to join our community. And there's a lot of positive situations coming from, from the developer, and I would just like to see it run through. I know we're going through a water crisis, but they seem to have their, their structure there, and they've done their homework to, to come up with this business. So I'd like to move forward.
Is that a motion, or?
I, I got a quick question, real quick.
Okay.
Now, does this, this fall under, this is for Sean, fall under the same issue as the new apartment complexes that are coming in? Once it comes in, we get allotted that much more water for the following year?
Not necessarily. The, it's all based on, so what we're currently in is public health and safety, and so that's based on population, and then historical use for commercial. So-
Sean?
Yeah.
And it is also seventy percent of their water use would also be in that. So yes.
Yes, it would. No, I was, I was, yeah, I was kind of, I was, the population base, but for commercial, industrial, is based on seventy percent of historical. So as they build a historical amount, it's, it's just basically in getting them to conserve a certain amount of a percentage. So, but it does, it does actually bring up the historical amount.
Can I, can I say something real quick? Sean, does this fall within all the ordinances and zonings, zoning of our, our city?
Yeah, this project is in compliance with our, our Planning and Zoning Code and the zoning designation.
Something that the council might be missing right now is, why is the Planning Commission keep voting these things down? They don't make water policy. We do. But they keep voting things down based on water, which is out of their purview. So if they're going to keep doing this, it seems like eventually, we've got to start thinking about a reorganization of the Planning Commission. But they can't keep doing this. We set water policy, the Planning Commission doesn't. And that's all I want to say about that. But I agree with Councilman Ramirez that we should move forward with this.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Okay, do we have a motion, or?
I'd like to make a motion to for the project.
To go forward with the project?
To go forward with the project and accept it, yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been motion and a second to, to approve this appeal. Real call, please.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Singleton?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I also vote aye. Okay, we'll see you in about a couple of months with all the jobs. Okay, well, next we'll go to the consent calendar. We have five, five things on the consent calendar. Anybody like to pull anything? Number one is already pulled and we're not gonna use that one today. Anybody have anything else they wanna pull? Or, or talk about?
Can I just talk about why I'm pulling number one?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, the reason why, this was the project to do stop signs on, on Harrison and Hayes. And, you know, the reason why I pulled it, of course, is just due to funds. I'd rather have the funds to get more water right now than go forward with this project. If we do come up with more funds, then I'll bring back the project. And that's the only reason why I pulled it. Right now is I see as, you know, right now the money is more important for the water and for the community. And, and I'll look into this project in the future.
Okay. Okay, is there anything on the consent calendar that anybody in the audience would like to pull? Okay, do we have a, a motion to accept the consent calendar or?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the changes.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. A roll call, please.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I also vote aye. Okay, we'll go to ordinance, presentation, discussion, and potential action items. Number one, discussion, direction, and adoption of resolution 4108, updating the city's water shortage regulations related to businesses. Shawn?
Thank you. Mayor and council, this was a future agenda item requested by Councilman Singleton related strictly. The resolution had been updated based on the comments of Councilman Singleton of basically a one day a week or no watering for businesses. And so staff prepared a report with the action item if the council wishes to take action on that. But I'll, I'll leave it up to Councilman Singleton to discuss.
Okay, 'cause we all know where we at with water. And it's hard to get citizens to feed into what we're doing to say, yes, we agree. When you have water being washed down the street, you can have that at Save Mart, you can have that, even at DMV, they have water going crazy. When you have the businesses that are plush green, it's hard for the citizen to say, yeah, let me stop and let my yard die out. But it's not dying out over here. And I get it in some areas of the school that you need to have the grass green. I get that. But it shouldn't be all over the school. Just because we can afford to pay the fees or the fines for overwatering doesn't mean that we should, because as Ms. Jones said, that it's not gonna be temporary. Whatever fix we do now by purchasing water is a Band-Aid. It's gonna keep bleeding out. So we need to think long-term because businesses have the accessibility over the citizens to change their lawn quicker. They could make theirs more desert-friendly than we can quicker. Some of us just put in green grass and now we end up watching it die. And not everyone is even doing that. Like Mary Jones said, right across her beach, she's got some pretty green grass, but it ain't hers. I mean, she'd love to have it. And it's just kinda disheartening when we see the water and everybody who's in the fight to do it is just shaking their heads. I mean, we've already went back on what we said as far as the overcharging. We, we issued the money, we said, we're not gonna do that anymore. And now we're kinda seeing that we're in a deeper hole than we would've been if we'd have kept forward with the program. But nevertheless, we changed it as a council and we have to live with that. But now we can't continue to just have all these businesses watering like there is no water shortage. And it's not even on one day a week. You go by Save Mart, I mean, you have swimming ducks in there, there's so much water going out there. It's like, at what point do we say stop? The people that work at Save Mart live right next to us and their yards are dry. So it's, to me, I mean, we have to do something because nothing isn't working. Just saying, okay, that's a business, they can pay for it. That, that's not acceptable. And another feedback would be on the state facilities. I don't have a problem with the inmates doing their shower program because they're accounted in when we get our water allotted. That's, that's, that's a given. They have to have their hygiene. But it's the outside of the prison and the state hospital that I have a problem with because they're so, so green. And it's like, we have to drive by this and see this and knowing that we're spending millions on getting water just to get us through month by month. And it's like, it's just, it's just frustration. I mean, it's like, what else can we do? We can't garnish them. No, that's a state facility. What are we gonna do? We can't walk in there and shut the water off. No. So we have to absorb that with us. And that's just to me, it's, it's wrong. It's wrong. And I know the citizens are tired of it, 'cause I'm tired of it. Man, it just, there has to be an agreement where we have to say, yes, let's stay in the fight together so we can win the war. But if we divide amongst each other, we're never gonna win the war. Never. So I think we need to change up to how we allow these businesses to water. We have to figure out something because their study getting green and the money we have is going down and our water level isn't going up yet. So we're open to any and all ideas there, council.
Is there a way, is there a way that we could, like, like businesses that come in, instead of them planning to grow grass, we could offer some kind of incentive or grant for them to do like fake grass?
Do houses, you mean?
Businesses, yeah. Like, same like we're doing with, with the residential, you know, we could do something with the business and.
Well, staff, staff is working, sorry to interrupt, but staff is working on a policy for new development. And usually typically, any new project that requires any type of discretionary review, we condition the projects that there's no turf permitted. But we are still working, we are working on a policy that we can implement that would basically allow us at the business license level to ensure that, you know, if you open a new business, you know, maybe, and once the policy comes back, it may be where something, you know, where if you're opening a new business, maybe you have to, you know, remove that turf and, you know, exchange it for something more drought resistant. That could be a possibility when the council discusses that policy. But in terms of like new projects, we're typically, we're, we're already restricting the, the installation of turf in any new business.
Okay, also on the, on the water and stuff like that too, and it's health and safety water, isn't it, is what it called, what's it called, health and?
Our water?
Well, the water we're getting right now, what's it called?
It's, we're under public health and safety.
Public health and safety.
Yeah.
Okay, valley fever is public health and safety. So let's go to the state and ask for more money. Because the prison needs it. You know, they have to have it themselves. We have it in our town here. So we could get our, our schools, our West Hills, our, our prisons, everybody to sign off on this. And, and we can put this out to the public and, because we're getting all these phone calls from all these newspapers, let's put that out there too. And maybe we can get some more water. And let's send a letter to the governor, tell him we need more of the water. And we can all sign it, not just me. All the whole council sign it. And I think that, I think that's, that would work a little bit more because it is valley fever and we need it. I mean, everybody's trying to save water. I mean, most people are, you know, they're, they're trying to. But it, it's hard to let, to put a lot of money into your yard and let it go completely. I mean, I paint my yard. I hate, I still hate it, but I paint it and it looks pretty good. But I just painted it again. So I think we need to write a letter to the, to the governor and see what we can do on that too. And then send it, send it, not just to the governor, but CC it to all of our representatives.
Exactly. I was just gonna say, yeah, we gotta push those representatives. I mean, I've dealt with this valley fever and that's what's giving me my, my tumors. That's what's giving me my health issues that I've been going through. My son loves his mom when she was, when he was six years old, too, valley fever. It, it is, it is bad. And then it's sad when you go to valley children and just take your, your kids. And they done also, I mean, the line of the kids are just, you know, Kalinga hereon, Kalinga hereon. And it's, it's pretty sad. And I think, you know, with this election coming up, these, these representatives need to know that we have to be on the map. We have to be in their view, in their mapping in front of us. If I have to even walk all the way over there and protest for the water, I'll do it. Because that's why I'm in this seat, to represent our community. And if I have to do that and hike over there, which I've been, already talking to somebody that does long hikes, I will do it. And whatever it takes. Because these representatives need to know that we're, we're, we're not just something that could just dust off our, our cars. We, we need to make sure that if they're gonna come into our town and ask for our vote, they need to make sure that whatever they put down on their stuff, they have to be serious. And they have to, when they come to our town, they have to know that in order for our vote, they have to do what they promise and what we need. It's an emergency and it's gonna hurt a lot more, a lot more individuals, kids, I mean, everything.
You know, and I, I get it that the city can't go out and physically regulate people's water. But it's, it's just amazing on how it goes over everybody head that there is no water. They think it's just, they're just saying that, they're just saying that. But like this gentleman said, he walks by Keg Park and it's, it's slushy. Before it wasn't, 'cause I drove by there when they were telling me that they weren't watering it. So I'm like, okay, let's see how, what the color of it is, how bad is it? But now you're saying they're watering every day. And it's like, I mean, at what point do we get the citizens, well, not even the citizens, 'cause we're doing, it's the businesses that are out there to see that we have to fight this together. I mean, we're, we're losing a battle right now. And it's gonna cost us a lot. We don't wanna roll up, fold up Kalinga because there's no water and everybody start moving out, 'cause that'd be the next thing people start doing. I've gotta go where there's water at. There's no water here, but we're not, Kalinga's not built like that. They are built to stay and fight for what's theirs. And that's what we have to do. I mean, and like Manny says, I wasn't here in 93 when they had the big collapse. I was somewhere in Texas, I was going to high school, but.
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three. They see, that was a good year, my graduation year. But like he said, we didn't stop and just say, okay, we're done. Earthquake took us out. He's, no, we rebuild, we brick by brick, we fought back. So what was the comment? If Mother Nature can't take us down, the government can't either. I mean, 'cause we elected them to be where they're at. At the end of the day, they need our votes. But if they can't give us water, how can we give them a vote? I mean, I don't see anybody's earning a vote from Kalinga right now.
Yeah, and just remember too, when Kalinga was first getting bigger and bigger, we had to train, bring our water in. And then they started using trucks. And then, I don't know how many people remember it, but over by the fire station, we had an Ion building right there with water that, that was our main one. We had one there. And we had one at Polk and California Street too, right there too. There was two of them. And those, those were big. And they were covered too. You couldn't even see them in those days. So we need to do this. And hopefully we'll get Marissa and Shonda to write, they're pretty good about writing letters and then we'll sign them and stuff.
Okay, and I'm, I'm great with that, but what do we do as far as the businesses? The businesses, do we give them the one day, what'd you say, Monday? You want everybody to get the water flowing every Monday? You could do your businesses on Monday, but that's it? Not Monday through Monday, just Monday at whatever time is designated to water your yard? I mean, businesses have to fight with us. They have to. 'Cause we're still gonna go to Save Mart if, if the grass is yellow. That has no problem. I'm still gonna go up in there and purchase something if the grass is yellow.
Are you talking about the schools too though?
Well, and.
Because they, they need the grass for, because they have to go by rules.
Yeah, 'cause CIF, CIF, right?
That's, that's, that's out of our hands, you know what I mean? We can put down what we design here and what their rules are there. I don't know how or who falls short. Because at the end of the day, if the grass is green at the school that we have no water here, people are not gonna mention CIF. They're not, and I'm not saying the places where kids play at. I'm not saying the football field make it great. That, that's insane. I'm not saying the parks where they play at. No, there's no way. That, that's, that's crazy. But I'm saying in the surrounding areas where there are no kids playing, I don't know what the ramifications on that would be. But we just have to know what we're dealing with before we put that into play though. But we, we can always check in to see what that is. But for the businesses at, at hand, that they need to give me, in my opinion, a Monday or a no day. Whatever the council agrees to, we can pick and choose.
Uh, go ahead. Come on up.
So I've probably walked a fifth of this town within the last, uh, two or three months. And I tell you, I've went door to door and I've talked to people. And you're exactly right. People are willing to fight for what's theirs. And their fight right now, unfortunately, is not with the city, it's against the city. And when you guys took away all their watering and said you can't even water one day in the front yard, I'm telling you, people spent six to eight grand fixing those yards and they're giving you guys the finger. They aren't gonna do it. They're telling me that they are not gonna stop. And that's an interesting thing. They want one day. They want one day to be able to water. I understand the current water situation that we're in, but you hit the nail on the head. People in Kalinga do fight for what they want. And a lot of these folks believe the health and safety with having a front lawn extends into multiple faucets. Interesting pun. But I was gonna show you that I just got a, a notification on my phone. And this is from the Ion Water app that I've been trying to get you guys to get to everyone that wants one in town. And it told me right now, a little bit ago, that I had a 65 gallon per hour leak at my house. Now, I looked everywhere. It's not a leak. What it is, is I guess probably one of my kids took an extra long shower. And I've been all over them about this, right? Like, take small showers. My grass, by the way, is brown. I have my trees around there that we are watering just to keep them alive, fruit trees and things like that. But overall, my grass is definitely brown. But I think that you're gonna get a little bit more with people if you give them a little bit. And I think that people are gonna be more willing to conserve if they understand where they're at. So like with me, I have six people living in my family. And even only watering the trees, you can look on the usage here and you can look on the graph and you can go like per month, right? And you can see. So like, let's say if I hit the, the month, you know, this month, no, last month, I used 19,924 gallons. That's 4,000 gallons above what the city was doing overage charges of, and I've been conserving. And my, my, my grass is brown. And so how is that fair to me, having six people in my family? That's, that, you know, I did get refunded those charges and I appreciate that. But I also understand that, you know, we have millions in reserve. We do. We got that money. And that came from taxpayers. I would love to see that money be used to A, pay, offset that water bill if we can't get the state to do it. Because I think they deserve it, 'cause that money came from us. Or B, get them smart meters, like yesterday. I'm telling you, if it can find the leaks here in my thing, oh, and the city has multiple leaks all over the place. I just know, from walking around, I seen all kinds of leaks. I'll tell you one right now. Over there at the, the park in Sandalwood, there's a leak. And I took a video of it. And it looks like it's very small. But when I first got the water, the Ion Water in, my little drip was three gallons an hour. I didn't realize that. That was, that's almost 60 gallons a day. And I was like, whoa. And take that times 30 days, that's a lot, right? So I wonder how many other people in town, in fact, I know a lot of them do, they have these leaks and they don't know about them. They have, they're using an excessive amount and they don't know that they're using it. When they see their bill, yeah, it's a little bit higher than others. But I think if we give people tools to be able to fight this, that they will. And I also think that, that I understand that the staff does everything they can, you know, to try and be legal with the state and try and do. And I know that I'm very critical a lot of times on, you know, staff reports and things like that. And I just want everyone to know that. Like, I understand that staff is doing the best that they can, literally. And I understand the council up here is, is in having to make tough decisions. And I, I get that. It's just unfortunate and the people are mad. They are. And they want that one day. And so I, I would hope that if you gave the businesses one day, that you would also give the people one day of front yard watering. In fact, most of the people I talked to said that they would rather water their front yard than their backyard. Like, my backyard's completely dead. But I know it's a tough decision. I appreciate you guys up here doing the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori?
Good evening, everyone. Lori Villanueva, superintendent. And since schools came up, I just wanted to jump up and let you know what we are doing. So we are also balancing our health and safety and also our CIF. And, but we have, we are super aware of what's going on. We have cut our water usage 40 to 50%. And areas that children aren't playing on, we're trying to get those to die, except when we got a tree in the middle of it. We're trying to keep our trees out because our little ones where we, you know, they're out in the heat, we don't have a lot of shade structure. So we're trying to maintain shade. And something that people might wanna be aware of is we all pay exorbitant fees to workers' comp. If I have employees that get valley fever and they can tie it to their employment. If I have employees that get valley fever and they can tie it to their employment, it's actually accepted. As a a a, like a worker's comp injury. And when our workers' comp claims go up, so do our costs. And so when I do talk about the safety part of it, it is a very serious safety issue. Um, again, with the CIF and the sports, if our fields fall out of what the officials consider to be, you know, proper. Watering and safety, then we would be obligated to get on a bus and play our games somewhere else, because you wouldn't be able to play. And we resurfaced our tennis courts a while back, because we were almost at the verge of not being able to have tennis games because of the cracks on them. And around here, you get a lot of cracks in your your cement, right? So I want you to know that we are aware, we've changed um, how much we water. We are getting ready to come and present to you, um, we wanna water kind of a little bit on a couple days, rather than a lot on one day. Because we think we can keep our turf alive. And that for us is really important. When you fall on hard, dry turf, you break bones. And you have a lot more serious injuries, which is a liability for everybody. And when it's, you know, at least somewhat watered, it provides a cushion for falls. And so we're also trying to do some liability prevention and risk management. Um, but we are doing our best to to cut back as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Gentlemen, what would you like to do? Would you like to go to the one day?
I'd like to start off with with the one day.
Can I, I I wanna clarify some, a few things. Um, currently, the way the the way the regulations are set. It is one day a week for businesses. So the the perp, you know, the discussion what was brought up was basically going from, you know, staying at one day or going to no days. So. If we go to one day, that's the status quo. So that's, that's basically what the current regulations are. Also to clarify for front yards, I know that people use the term front yards and you can't water front yards. You can water one day a week in your front yard and your backyard. You just can't water your front yard turf. That the turf is the only thing that cannot be watered. So I just wanna make sure there's clarification for the public and the audience. That when it comes to front yard watering, it's not no front yard watering, it's just no watering of front yard turf. So if you have shrubs, you have trees, you have anything else in your front yard, you can water it on the one day a week watering. Just like you can water anything in your backyard one day a week. It's just the front yard grass or the turf that can't be watered at all in the uh, during this regulate, during these restrictions.
Does it have to be drip? In the front?
No, it doesn't have to be drip. It just you cannot, you, it basically the restrictions are the one day a week watering. And you cannot water your front yard drip, I mean, your front yard grass. So if you have trees, shrubs, anything in your front yard, you can water those the one day a week. Which is now Mondays.
Since it is one day watering a week and it's obviously that they're not even following that. So I like to retract my statement of one day a week and just say no watering in at at all. I mean. And it's also getting cold, so you normally don't water as much during that season anyway, but um, we are open to suggestions, City Council.
You know, with the one day, I mean, i- if if we do no no watering, there's gonna be people still watering. I think uh, I don't want the schools to not, I don't. Laurie, you, Ms. Villanueva, you made a perfect, you know. There's schools that come to our town because of the field. Schools are excited to play with our fields. The kids do deserve their fun outside. They do.
Um, that's not, speaking of the schools though. Yeah, I don't know.
For those that are over overwatering, please look. That that water could go to our schools, to our parks where our family, families and kids could play actually safe. That one day a week, I mean, um. I think businesses should restrict. From watering and I think we should, I mean, residential should be one day.
Yeah, I mean, our policy right now is for no residential watering of turf, right? So why are we allowing businesses to water? It it just. If you wanna make the people mad, tell them that.
Well, the businesses should not be watering turf. So based on the governor's order. Non, no non-functional turf should be irrigated. That's for all classes for commercial, industrial and institutional. So when you talk about the schools or any business, non-functional turf should be. Not irrig, you shouldn't be irrigating non-functional turf.
How about Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec, uh, in terms of the way it's written, it's functional because it's park space. Non-functional means, I, there's a definition, I think we've, we've put it in the res, I think we put it in previous reports.
Not every day.
No, we still set the regular, the the city can still set the restrictions on watering restrictions, but the, based on the governor's order and the state order for non-functional turf. That is an order that's basically statewide that all, you know, for non-functional turf.
Yeah, but they don't even do it. You go down to the Capitol and it's green.
And I'm not defending the state.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of recycled water that the state facilities use. Now I can tell you there's state facilities in our. City that are not on recycled water, cuz they use our water. Um, and so, but there are facilities that we do see that are on recycled water, which there are provisions with recycled water.
Nathan?
So, um, you know, I've, I just think that the. If you look at the actual wording of the ordinance that you have in front of you, it actually does uh, not only include um. Uh, businesses, but it also includes industrial and institutional, which technically will include the schools. Um, and everything with that unless the wording is changed.
That was just based on, and it can be changed, obviously.
Right, so I'm just saying, I wanna point that out to council before they move on to that. And then secondly. Um, I actually read the entire th- the entirety of it, and there's actually a lot of teeth in there. And so I don't understand how it says that we can't shut off the state, because in there, it directly says. That the city can go and shut you off. So if the state, and and so I don't understand, so you're, are you telling people that they can shut off people's homes, but they can't shut the state off? Are you saying there's a difference in there? Because in that ordinance, it directly says that, that the city can do all kinds of different things. There's like. A thing about this long. So, and I just talked to a guy that works at the prison, um, I think Ray probably works out there too, right? Or somewhere. You know what they ta- they told me? They told me the inmates flood the place. Yeah, they flood it. Right? And so how do we stop that? So they're flooding while we can't water. I mean, I think we should get at least one day a week for the citizens. I think you're gonna have better luck with that, I promise. I think you should roll out the smart meters. And try and spend some money on that, cuz I think that people are really in a mode, just trying to help here. I think people are in a mode of. Of panic and they don't want their lawns to go dead. And I can tell you that one day a week is barely enough on my trees to keep them alive. And I'm really trying hard to just like, you know, I understand, you know, what uh, Councilman Ramirez said that the the. The, you know, Parks and and Rec and the the schools need the water. Um, my kids don't need to be taking fifteen, twenty minute showers, that's for darn sure. I wish I could stop them, so. I'm gonna do whatever I can on my part. Uh, but I just think that. The city can work on this, on this date, and if they can't, I don't think that's, that's another thing. You know, when I listened to, I think two or three meetings ago, you said industrial can't save, commercial can't save. Um, you know, the prison and them can't save. So unfortunately, and after every one of those comments, you said unfortunately, this relies on the residents. And I said it at the time, nah, nuh-uh, that doesn't rely on the residents. That's not fair. Not a chance. You go to those people and you sell them to start saving or we start shutting them off, just like you would do anybody else. Just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
I just have a question of clarification. The Washington Post and CNN and one other source. Said that our water was limited from, uh, there was no watering between nine AM and six PM. But the paper says, from our paper information, says from six AM to nine PM. So is the six P, six AM to nine PM is the correct timeframe that we cannot water between?
I would take our regulations.
Well, I just wanted to make sure.
Washington Post or the.
And then the other question is, because I cannot figure this out other than retaliatory or just to make life miserable. Why is it set that we can water from midnight until six AM on Monday? And then from Monday night from nine until midnight. Why isn't it starting like Sunday at nine o'clock and water all the way until the next thing? I mean, I don't know how many people in reality are gonna get up and go out and change the water. We do, because we're weird. And we love our plants, but we only have so many hoses to run water, cuz even that amount of time isn't enough. But why, why does the city have that set up that way? Why do we have to, the way it's set right now, we can't just let something drip? Do they just think we all have drip? You know, automatic sprinklers or something, because we don't. So I don't understand why. It seems punitive. I don't understand the reasoning for it.
Thank you.
Is there a way we could go to the prisons and ask them to put timers on their showers or something like that? Or do they already have?
They they already have timers on there.
We've had a lot of these conversations with the prison, the state hospital, um, regarding some of the concerns. Um. A lot of it's out of their control. Talking to the folks that are actually, that we're speaking to. Um, have tried to implement some of these things and unfortunately, the the inmates have a lot of power in the facilities. And real, in terms of how many showers they get, and they've they've tried to restrict shower usage. Um, and those are, those are very challenging from their administrative standpoint.
And also too, like, I mean, towards, I I know a lot of people like to take long showers. I mean, I I switched all my faucets. I went sensor to my faucet. I have the old school ninety-one something little thing from. The PE, the from from high school PE. I mean, you know. So I, you know, also too, if people do their homework, you know, um. Get get some two liter bottle and just put it right there, you know, it saves a lot of plants, saves a lot. I've gone to a couple of people, Lindsay, Hamford, and did my research with compost. I threw compost in my backyard and I haven't watered my backyard in like. Three weeks or more, and for some reason, just coming out. And now that it's cool, I put more and it's still staying a little bit green, but it's it's doing your homework. Setting your timers, seeing where's the leaking, putting your your sprinklers to the. To the edge of where, where it goes to the sidewalk. It's just, you know. You know, we're we're, we're not buying and.
Yeah, compost is good for your grass, because it holds the water.
Exactly. And that universal compost, it's moist. So it gets humidity in there and it keeps your grass growing. My kid's mom has it, she never waters her grass and it, for some reason, it's just coming out like it's. So, and especially now in cool, cool weather, I'm saying you water at night, it's gonna stay a lot moist. So.
Okay, gentlemen, let's get back to where we.
Oh, I mean, I would say one, okay, you got a question.
Scott Netherton, four twenty-four College Avenue. Um, as a resident. I, I don't want the council to look bad by s- keep referring to what Sacramento says. What Governor Newsom is saying about the water issue. We all know we do what we need to in Kalanga for ourselves. We did it during COVID. We can do it during this. I'm not saying don't conserve. But we can't do what we want during one time and then st- fall back and say, well, it's California saying. Under order, we can't water anything that's not any grass, anything that's not, you know, if, you know, absolutely necessary. Um, so I just don't want you guys, you know, people to get the wrong impression saying, well, they can do what they want when they want to, but then when they don't, they go and blame Newsom. So, um, the other side of that is, like they were saying, Kalanga fights. If you tell them zero. They're gonna go and do it three times. Just because they don't like to be told they can't. Especially like you said, when they spend thousands of dollars on their yard. Mine's dead, my neighbor's looks like Pebble Beach. Okay, but I think if you, I understand the reasoning for doing the backyard one day, front yard not. But if there's any way of giving them that one day, I think you might see. Them take that one day and stop doing it three, because hey, at least they're getting, you know, something. It's better than being told. You know, don't do it at all. And that's my, my opinion. I probably still want water. I I've learned my grass comes back after I don't water for a year. It just, when I water, it pops up. It's that kind I have, I guess, but. Um, again, you know, we can't keep. Blame Newsom on saying, no, we can't, the state says don't do that, when we know Kalanga does what we need to to survive. During COVID, we did it. We made businesses essential and Kalanga supported that. If you make rules based on what Ka- Kalanga needs for water conservation and you make it fair. I think Kalanga will follow it too, but just to, you know, back, personally, backwater doesn't, or backyard makes no sense. But not front yard. They would much rather have that front yard one day a week than they may not water three times. And the other thing, you know, we're getting cooler, can we maybe not do it at, during those hours at night? I mean, do it early morning or late evening, because. People, they'll put it to going and go to bed, and then they don't shut it off. If they don't have the timers, they just run the hoses. Like Mary, she may not wanna get up at three in the morning and move it, so I'll do it when I get up at six AM. You know, so if we could do it during other hours with it cooling off and not as hot. People may let it go and set a timer and go out there from seven to eight at night or something. And you might find they conserve more that way as well. So, just my thought.
Thank you.
So on watering, where do we wanna go with bis- businesses?
I think if we're gonna s- tell the people that, if we set policy for the people saying that they can't water. Why are we not doing that for the businesses too? I think what we're doing is just finding ways to piss off the people and. Look at, this is the perfect example of why they're pissed, because they don't get the water, but the businesses do. Now, I'm not saying we shouldn't go and change the policy, maybe one day a week. Maybe we should. I don't know. But uh, if we're, right now, if we're gonna hold the people to that policy, then we should hold the businesses to that policy too. The people are the ones, there're fifty-three, fifty-three, I looked at the report, fifty-three, um, not tickets, but warnings went out. In the last couple of weeks to the people. Now, imagine the people getting warnings for watering their lawns. But then they go out and see the businesses watering their lawns and nothing happens to them. So if we're gonna set this policy for the people, I'm not saying we shouldn't change the policy, I don't know. But if we're, that's what the policy is right now. If we're gonna set this policy for the people, I believe we should also set this policy for the businesses as well.
And just to confirm, there is no outdoor watering for businesses on turf? So it's one day a week. It's, so it's, the the restrictions are the same for businesses. As they are for residential. Because can, all the business turf is considered non-functional, so it should not be watered at all. So if the sprinklers are going on there, you know.
Well, where's their citations then? Because nothing has happened, but go to Save Mart.
We can bring that back to code enforcement and and make sure that, you know, and see where we're see, whether we're seeing these. I know that sometimes. Yeah, they're in the middle of the day or whether or not they're at night. Um, and so that has to go back to code enforcement. And we, you can definitely bring that back, but um, in terms of the. The actual restrictions, the restrictions are essentially the same. Commercial businesses, anybody, any commercial business that has turf is considered non-functional, so it shouldn't be watered. Any other irrigation, any other landscaping that a business has is one day a week on Mondays.
And tha- that's even more frustrating, knowing that they're watering all this time and they should have been watering at all, even though they're a business. So, so I mean, we we're gonna have to really get with code enforcement and I I don't wanna. Um, wow, make it to that level, but it's done before rise and shine. So therefore, when we do get up, go to Save Mart, oh, the grass is green and the street is dry, but. When I leave for the gym at three o'clock in the morning, I hear the water. I tried to take a video, but it's too dark, so I. Like, that's not gonna work, but it just, you can hear the water as you're driving down and it bothers me. I would love to go and turn it off, but then they're gonna, you know, call chief and I'm in handcuffs in the wet grass or something. So, but it just, it is frustrating that they can't. So we need to get code enforcement involved. And I guess there's, there's nothing to even vote on on that, if they're not supposed to be watering anyway.
Yeah, I can, I can talk with Marissa about it.
Yeah, we can go to the businesses ourselves.
Now, do we need to, do we need to modify the wording on the schools, so that way it's correct?
No, it's still, it's still can, it's still consent, the current regulation restrictions are.
Right.
Are still in place, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't change anything.
And I mean, at at fifty percent, that's, that's more than what our businesses are doing. You know, if the school's saving fifty percent of water, I mean, that that's already more than what these businesses are doing to us already.
Yeah, see, I have, I have two shops. One of them's a business and I've been able to cut mine down to less than a thousand gallons a month. My house is also between seven thousand eighty-five hundred a month. So.
On Parks and Rec to make sure that they understand.
Yeah, I've notated that, based on the comments.
Right. You wanna just hold this one right now? Cause we don't wanna make it more. Okay. We'll go ahead and go to the next item. Authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support on behalf of the Kalinga City Council for Measure X as presented by the Committee for Excellence, Kalinga Huron Schools. Hilda Crawford, Committee Excellence for Kalinga Huron Schools. Hilda?
Good evening, I'm wearing a different hat tonight, but just wanna say that I am here to represent Kalinga Unified, here, Kalinga, excuse me, Kalinga Huron Unified District, asking for your support for the Committee for Excellence, Kalinga Huron Schools, yes, on Measure X. Our schools are the most important assets in our community and should be our number one priority. From higher achieving students to training for future jobs, to greater neighborhood safety, quality schools make a difference. We have an opportunity to maintain the quality of our local schools in the Kalinga Huron Unified School District without, and I rephrase that, without increasing taxes by voting yes on Measure X. While our teachers and staff do a great job in educating our students, many classrooms and school facilities in the district are outdated and inadequate to provide students with the facilities they need to succeed. In twenty sixteen, district voters passed a school improvement measure to modernize, upgrade and renovate many of our local classrooms and school's facilities, however, our work is not done. Measure X will continue our work upgrading classrooms, restrooms and school facilities and prepare students for better paying jobs and higher education. If passed, Measure X will make critical facility improvements to the Kalinga and Huron schools, including replacing deteriorating plumbing systems and improving drinking water quality, repairing or replacing leaky roofs, making health, safety and security improvements, replacing outdated heating, ventilation and air conditioning systems and constructing new classrooms to reduce overcrowding. Measure X makes financial sense and protects taxpayers. Measure X will not increase the tax rate property owners are currently paying. So there's no increase, it's just a continuance. All funds must be spent locally and cannot be taken by the state. By law, spending most, spending must be reviewed and annually audited by Independent Citizens Oversight Committee. Funds can only be spent to improve local schools, not for teacher or administrative salaries. Measure X upgrades and renovates old and inadequate classrooms, improves the education of local students and maintains the quality of our communities, all without increasing taxes. That's something we can all support. Please join us and vote yes on Measure X. Thank you for helping support the children in our community. By supporting the bond, you're supporting the children. If you have any questions, our superintendent, Lauren Villanueva, can answer what needs, what questions you have.
Now, the bond we have in place right now, how long was it for?
The one that we're trying to extend?
Yes.
Yes, the nineteen ninety-seven bond is expiring in two years. And so it's timing, right now, it's a good timing to extend that one for another thirty years.
Okay, now, how how long was the other one?
The first one? Or the last one in twenty sixteen?
The the la, okay, there was one.
Yeah, so there, we always go with the thirty year. Cause it, it helps control the cost to the taxpayer.
So basically, we we extended it in two sixteen, twenty sixteen, and now we're extending it again?
Twenty sixteen was a whole new bond, so that was in addition to taxes you were already paying on the nineteen ninety-seven bond. What this will do is the nineteen ninety-seven was set to expire. We're asking people to help us continue that bond without adding anything new. So any, whatever your tax bill is, it would remain the same.
I'd like to say just, I would be in support of it. I I'm a football coach for the JVS, I assist for a football. And I know there's kids that are coming from other towns now. And they're more excited to be here than in their old schools because of the way our schools are are. We had a max prep photographer, they said, not even in LA they have schools, they're looking, it's good with the older buildings we have. Like I said, mentioned before, every school that I've, that we played this year, they would love to play in our field all the time. They love our schools and for, you know, and I understand why. Even for my daughters in Hanford, she would love to move to Kalinga just to, for the schools. I've seen a lot of schools and I think what we, I would be in support for it because I've I've, we've tried, we had a lot of transfers now. I know, I know you've seen. And for football next year, I think within the next year or two years, we're gonna have to make a fresh team because of so many athletes that are coming in. And I think, would that, would it be something to fix the booth and the stadium and the lights?
Yes, I would put that on the project list. The lights, we're already getting quotes for LED lights and they were looking at the sound system.
Yes.
Right, and I think the community takes great pride in our our facilities and I love Friday night lights because everybody comes out. And it might have been you, Mayor, when I first got here, you said, let's win at football because when football has a good year, Kalinga has a good year. And the the community has always been supportive and we do our best to provide the world-class education the best that we can. And we'd appreciate that continued support. And I I brought some extra information if anybody would like it. And another thing that I want people to know is that we have added a new grade level in California, which is TK, which is four-year-olds. And so we need to expand facilities to accommodate those four-year-olds. And I have a few years before I have to have all four-year-olds. But we are pretty much at the limit in the elementary schools. We wanna put up a new wing at Sunset Elementary. We want to continue improvements such as, you know, improving the fields, even our auditorium. That is a centerpiece for the city to come in.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, the band, the band building?
Yes.
Yes, okay, cause I've seen that, a lot, a lot of students wanna join band and I would love to see if they could.
Yes, so on the project list from before is two, two music rooms at Kalinga Middle School, Huron Middle School. And I want everybody to know, cause I've been asked, like, what about the stuff you were gonna do in the last project? I spent it down to the last penny on the first round of projects. There are projects we wanna continue and there are new projects. And I did put these in these lovely packets for you. And you'll be able to look through and see what the A and B round was. We expended the funds, we got some state reimbursements. And that was something Councilman Atkinson and I talked about, is that we don't just ask you for the money to put up buildings. We also apply for all of the state matches. Some things are a fifty-fifty match, some things are a seventy-five, twenty-five match. We never let a match go unasked for. So we are doing everything we can on our end. We have an entire company that does nothing but get our applications in, get us online with the state allocation board to bring in those applications. And we're actually doing two additional projects right now because those reimbursements have come in, which is a construction sciences career technical education building in Huron, where we are going to have a construction pathway. And we learned about that from the community, a lot of people are very interested. And we are finally putting air conditioning in the small gym at the high school. And, you know, these things are important because basketball plays in there, volleyball, and those kinds of improvements are important because we have a lot more hot days than cold. So those are some of the projects.
I know the boys locker room is a little bit, are they something in the projects for the boys locker?
Yes, boys and locker, boys and girls locker rooms.
Yes.
Definitely, cause those lockers are a little beat up. Right, and so I have a pretty extensive list of things I'd like to do. This one bond isn't gonna cover the whole list. So if the bond passes, and I hope that it does, I ask for everybody's support. We will go through, the board will then go through what the highest needs are and then we will attack those projects. And will, as reimbursements come in, we will continue putting, you know, projects up. The other thing is, is the, a few years ago with the twenty sixteen bond, there was a cops. We did pay off the cops. So we are completely clean for everything that we're doing. We don't have any outstanding debt coming into this. And if you've seen the work that I've done, there's a brand-new building up at Bishop, brand-new building at Dawson. We paved the bus barn, which may not seem like a lot to you, but when you're trying to drive a giant bus, you need to not have potholes and giant cracks. So we've done a lot of good things. I think we're giving a great place for our children to learn and I would like to continue that work.
And your automotive out at the the old school farm, it's just excellent.
It's amazing, isn't it?
Yeah, I just couldn't believe that one.
Yeah, it's, it's amazing. And we've updated our welding. We now do level one and two welding. And working with the college, then they can go and get their level three certificate. So we're also trying to build pathways for our students because when people live in Kalinga, they tend to keep living in Kalinga. And if we're gonna educate our future workforce and the people that are gonna take care of us when we get old, we wanna do a good job.
Is our school population increasing every year?
Actually, it is. We are one of the districts in the area that is not decreasing in enrollment. So we are holding steady and we just had a few new students come in today. And as our our coach mentioned, we are getting athletes that wanna come and play for us and that's pretty amazing.
Yeah, cause the next five years is gonna be very interesting with the, you know, with the players that are coming up from Kalinga. So it's gonna be exciting to be in every sport of watching, you know, these these athletes and everything, so.
It is. And just adding students, being the TK students. So we always had TK, I'm sorry, are you doing okay there? I just took over. I'm so sorry. So we've always had TK, but it was always, you know, like twenty, thirty kids. Now that we have birthdays that we have to accept four-year-olds for, and within three years, I have to accept all four-year-olds. And that's completely different facilities. Kindergarteners need classrooms that are built for kindergarteners. In the CCR codes, which I'm sure Sean enjoys reading, there is only one classroom that has a required size and that's kindergarten classrooms. So we have to have specific classrooms for these kids. And so inside the booklet I'm gonna give you, I actually am showing two buildings that I hope to put up, potentially one on the old hospital property that the city was kind enough to give us from the ARPAPHONS. So we have a lot of big ideas, a lot of ways to grow and good schools attract people to our city, right?
Did you finally get internet for everyone?
We have internet for everybody, thank you for asking. We started that at the start of the pandemic. Why are you laughing? Okay, so just before the pandemic, we had actually been working on an initiative with Verizon. And they had a grant for schools. And so when the pandemic started, every single child either got an LTE iPad or a device and they got the little wireless device they could take home. We still continue to pay for that and all kids, it may not be great internet cause there are spots around here where it's very bad. But every child has a device that connects us internet at home.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question, you did mention taxes, that there will be no increase.
There will be no increase.
So it's just gonna roll over?
It's just gonna roll over and continue.
X amount, the next thirty years, okay.
Yes, sir.
And the other thing, it would be in your best interest, young lady, to watch who you hang out with, cause you know.
Well, but thank you.
Yes.
May I answer any more questions for you?
Yes, what, what are you, how much, how many millions are you asking for?
We're looking to receive thirty-nine million with this bond over the thirty years.
And over that thirty years, how much will we end up paying for the total bond?
I don't know the answer to that.
My guess is probably somewhere in the seventies.
It might be, and I don't know, but I can get that answer to you from our tax advisor.
Okay.
I can get that, I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared for that.
That's okay. The bonds themselves, how many bonds, how many bonds we have outstanding right now?
Just the nineteen ninety-seven that we have two years remaining on and the one that we had in twenty sixteen. Those are the only ones that are out right now.
And how much is the one for twenty sixteen?
That one, I believe, was thirty-six million.
So we're close to putting the people on the line for a hundred and fifty million dollars with these two bonds. And we're tiny towns, two tiny towns over thirty years. That seems a little much for me. These colleges also are gonna be asking for a bond as well. What has your school board done to try and get state funding? Has any of them gone to Sacramento and asked their state representatives for anything?
Actually, there's been a lot of efforts on that and especially with our Huron contingent. They've been working directly with Senator Caballero, specifically to borrow some money for high schools. And whenever, like I mentioned before, we we work with a company called Schoolworks and they help us apply for any kind of grants, help us apply for any kind of reimbursements that we can get. So part of the CTE building going up right now was part of a career technical education grant. So we do make efforts to alleviate what we can on that, but it's never enough on on those things to put up the buildings.
I understand the Hurons going out for for their high school, but that's not part of this bond, so.
No, it's not.
I guess, my, my question is, is what what is your school board doing to not, to relieve the tax on the citizens? This is a lot of money, seventy million dollars is a lot of money to put on the Kalinga citizens and and plus the, you know, the other one. So we're really looking at somewhere near a hundred and forty million dollars that we're gonna put on the citizens' backs. What is, I can't imagine the city of Kalinga putting a hundred and forty million dollars on the backs of its citizens. So what is the school board doing to kind of relieve some of that pressure that we're putting on the citizens?
I don't have a good answer for you besides doing everything they can to support, you know, what the children need, asking the state for the reimbursements when we can get them, supporting those resolutions and and supporting the work. But I'm not sure that I have an answer.
Yeah, I I know. I love you, Lauren Hill, I love you both. This isn't personal, I just got questions I need answered.
They're good, they're good questions. I think the the board does support the things that I I ask them to work on, like if we need new buildings. So I think their support's a huge piece of this.
If if this city council came up here and said, we're gonna put a hundred and fifty million dollars on the backs of the people, the people would go absolutely nuts. But they don't ever hear it because it's the school board. So my next question is, what percentage is going to Kalinga and what percentage is going to Huron?
Ah, that's a good question. So usually when we put buildings up, they're based on the population of the students in that area. So right now, there is, it's for the district. We're not saying X amounts for Huron, X amounts for Kalinga. We go off the project list. So whatever the project list is, that's how it'll be divided up. But we wouldn't do that project list until we know if we got the bond.
I got a quick question. Is Avena, or I mean, not Avena, I'm sorry, is Huron gonna be taxed on this as well besides Kalinga or is it just Kalinga?
It's every, it's every taxpayer in the entire school district. So it includes, and we are a joint district. We have people that live in San Benito County, Monterey County, and we have about twelve hundred square miles of attendance area and everybody within that twelve hundred square miles contributes to the district.
Basically, what we're gonna do tonight, we're just asking the city for our support for them, but the citizens are gonna, the ones are gonna make the decision, not us. Just because we make this letter doesn't mean it's gonna pass. We're, we're basically just supporting it ourselves and then it goes out to the citizens.
Right, but we're telling the citizens that we support it.
Then the citizens will say if they want it or not.
Yeah, I get that.
But when we do, that is kind of confirming that we agree with it. You know what I mean? It's not telling the citizens to vote for it. We're not telling them what to do, but it's saying, if they look at the guidance of the city council saying, hey, they're going forward with it, so it must be right. But that's, and that's the spot where we would be in. Cause we are supposedly be the ones that direct our citizens to the right direction. But that's, I didn't know about the twenty sixteen one.
Just the word, okay, I, my whole life, I went to Huron, Kalinga, well, before it used to be Fresno Unified District. And when we were with them, we used, we basically didn't get nothing. Me growing up here and going through the schools, I still, to this moment, right now, I tell the kids, you guys are lucky to have this. I wish back in the day, we could have this, this stuff. And and I I mentioned, like I mentioned before, with our businesses coming in with K-Mark and all that, more people are gonna see this and more families are gonna wanna come. I'm already getting a lot of people messaging me, hey, we passed by Kalinga, it's a very beautiful town. You know, if we wanted a business there, what we need to do, come to our city, you'll see. They love the schools. We just had a protein shake business that came in. They're so happy with the schools and they're from Oceanside. We get more people like that, I think, you know, I mean, I know it's, it's a lot of money, but our kids are gonna benefit from that because they're gonna get encouraged to come and teach here. There's a lot of kids that actually went here and they're teaching now in their own schools. That's what we want for our town and community.
Right, and and we're asking the community to invest in our children, right? The buildings that I put up are visible and they're there for kids. And it's giving them a good, healthy, safe place to live and to learn. And every child in the community goes to our schools, so to me, it does benefit. I pay the same taxes, it's on my taxes as well here. But I I think that when we invest in our children, then we're investing in our future. And that's why I'm asking the council support, not that you're saying, go vote for it. But if you support, like you said, the idea that this is good. But if you support, like you said, the idea that this is good for our city, that this is, you know, take a look at it, voters, be informed. But that's what we're asking for tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, I agree, I agree we should invest in this, in the students. I'm just saying, the state has a massive surplus right now. And I just wish the school board would try and go out and get some of it.
Yes.
This is putting a huge burden on, on the backs of Kalinga citizens, so.
And Adam, I remember you gave me a, um, a name of a company. We're gonna, we're checking them out.
Okay.
Someone that can go up and advocate for us.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, so what would you like to do?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Hilda.
Can I just, I'm sorry. Adam, I left you some homework in your little empty chair there, okay?
We'll, we'll put it in his box.
Thank you, Hilda.
Better look at it, I'm gonna ask you, test you next time, okay?
All right, Hilda, I appreciate it.
Better remember that.
I still love you, Hilda.
Yeah, right, uh-huh. You just said that, cause I'm here in my district, that's.
Do you have your library card, Adam?
Yes, he does, Adam does have a library card.
Okay.
I do have a library card, yes, I do.
Okay, gentlemen, what would you like to do?
Would this be on what, the November?
November eighth.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we do a motion to see if we want, huh, to support.
Do we need to sign that petition too? Or is this, take care of it?
Well, I'd like to make a motion to be in support of this, this bond.
Basically authorize the mayor.
Authorize the mayor, yeah, authorize the mayor to, uh, be in support of the, the bond.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to support this. Roll call, please.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
I'm a no, but Lori and Hilda, I want you to also know that I also put a no for the city bonds too.
Mayor Protim Singleton?
I always go opposite, Adam, yeah, yeah, we just don't, only we've got a common is bald heads, that's it. Um, but I, I just didn't know about the twenty sixteen bond, which, which, um, put a little wrench in that one. Cause I know once we get rid of this one, we'd be okay, if it's another thirty-year bond. So with that one, I'm gonna say no and leave it up to the mayor.
Mayor Ramsey?
I vote definitely yes. We have to, uh, secure our kids and we have to get it out there. I mean, just look what the, the last bond has done to our, our, our schools. Everybody likes our schools now. I mean, they, they praise them. Kids come back from reunions and they go, they can't believe what it looks like. So I'm supporting that a hundred percent.
And just like I mentioned, I believe the soccer team's gonna have to do some cuts, cause there's so many that actually went out to try out. This is what gets these schools going, stuff like this.
Build more soccer fields.
Build more soccer fields, right? And do more stuff, that's what it does, yeah.
Soccer fields will go, Kalinga will go, right? Okay, okay, next we'll go to announcements. City manager, do you have any announcements?
I have none.
Council members?
I got announcements. It's been a crazy week. We've done quite a few interviews for water. Tuesday, we met with, uh, Lindsay Jacobson from NBC Universal, uh, in reference to our water issues. They understand, they definitely understand, they just don't see why we're not getting any water like everybody else. But we also spoke to, uh, Renee Marsh Wednesday, uh, from CNN, who also had spoke with, uh, Sean in reference to why, why, why. Um, and they will be getting back in touch with us. And then, uh, we also spoke to Mr. Peter O'Dow. He's a NPR and a WBURS, a midday radio show. And he says he has five hundred, um, uh, states across the country that listen in. And they're very curious concern on how, um, California of all places can run out of water. It, it's puzzling, and some people in Arizona are thinking, could they be next? Because, I mean, we're not far off, or they're not far off. Then, uh, today, we spoke with, uh, Ms. Evelyn Lee from the Good Morning Show, uh, NTD. And they say they have a hundred and fifty million people watching, uh, their services. Um, and it was just to the point of water. I mean, and it's the most basic common resource that we have. And once they understand how much we used to get and how much we got, it's like, you can't tell us to cut back when you did it for us. You already cut back, at least give us half. I mean, then we can manage that, but we can't manage two thousand when we normally get ten. Uh, and that, that's just crazy, and their only question is why. And we've talked to many political constituents about this, and it just seemed like, well, like I told her, we're not getting the right ears to listen in. And hopefully, one of these four can say, hey, we hear that, we're up in Sacramento. All we want is somebody to listen and see what we, what we don't have. I mean, and like I told them, we're going from agricultural to almost like solar farming. It, it's crazy when we see the trees down, we know what's coming up. It's gonna be solar, solar, solar. I mean, it's just not fair to the people that have worked their behinds off here in the agricultural business. So, you know, and I told them, we just pray that you guys could just put it out there, and, uh, somebody will pick it up, up in Sacramento, which is probably somebody in Gavin's camp, to say, hey, you know, why are we doing just this area? Because I told them, if you drive to Fresno, it's looking pretty green over there. I mean, you went to Modesto to play softball, they're watering in the daytime. I'm thinking, wow, so, but we get the short end of the stick. I mean, and then they say those famous words, "You guys gotta manage that right there, manage it." Well, we're tired of managing it. I mean, it, it's, it's something has to give, so hopefully one of these individuals can spark somebody's interest, and we can, uh, get what is rightfully ours. Because, like I say, we're not gonna stop fighting. I mean, Manny say, "Let's walk to Sacramento." I'm a ride though, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna tell that lie and say I'm walking, man. I'm, I'm a ride to Sacramento, but we're gonna do what we have to do at the end of the day. Um, and also, a question has been proposed to me from the state hospital and the prison, not related to water. But they wanna know how, um, can one person run the city council? And I, I don't know where they were going, but like I tell them, you have to have a minimum of three. Maximum of five. Because Ron Ramsey, sitting mayor, he has one vote. Mayor Protim has one, Adam thinks he's got three, he's got one. And on down the line, we all have one. I mean, we all have one, so I told him, it has to be a collective agreement on whatever. I could propose we water every day, they're not gonna go with it. So I told him, you guys gotta u- understand how the city council functions before you just sit there and say, oh, okay, well, you're gonna do this for us? Okay, great. Or you're not gonna do this. I'm like, just sit back and understand the process, cause I thought I could come in and change the world. Ain't gonna happen with one man. One man, one vote is all you get. So I told him, just, um, come to the meetings or watch us on TV, and you'll see what it's all about, because it's, it's not a one pony show. We, we got five stallions in here ready to do work. I mean, and we're gonna make it work, but I have nothing else.
Okay, thank you. And we have been getting a lot of, um, news interviews and stuff. I've basically pushed a lot of them over to him, because I, I'm taking, still taking care of my wife at home. But, uh, we're still doing that, and we are getting a lot of other people sending us ways to save water. I mean, we know a lot of that already, and how to get water, uh, using nitrogen, hydrogen, everything, you know. We're getting all that stuff, so we're still putting it together when we're looking at it, we're just not throwing it away. But, um, some of the ideals could work, but not here, you know, and stuff. It's just, it, for a small, for a small person, or a, a small yard or something like that, some of this stuff could work easy. But for a city, it, it's, there's no way some of this stuff could work. That's all I have. Do you guys have any future agenda items?
I do. I'd like to bring back and see what the cost of those, uh, smart meters for the water, what, what the actual cost would be to at least get a grant or something to cover, so we can actually get some more of those in motion.
That's what we've been getting them for.
We've already got ten out there.
We'll give you an update at the next meeting on where we're at. We already have costs, it, it's been applied, and we've already applied for the funding under some of the state programs. So we'll give, we'll, we're giving you an update on some of that, uh, progress.
Yeah. Anything else?
Just real quick, as soon as they air these shows, I will let, right, you're good? I, I will let, uh, Ms., uh, Mary know.
Yeah, and just on that, um, with that, with what Mr. Singleton said, I, I've talked to a lot of representatives, and I don't make it as a Democrat or Republican. I make it as doing the right thing for us humans. It's the right thing to do, and I, like I mentioned, you wanna vote, do the right thing. And not just, you know, offer us a little, little, you know, um, treat, and then you get a vote. No, do the right thing. You know, it doesn't, doesn't matter how much you pitch, you gotta get us that water, we deserve it. You know, it's funny, because my dad worked for Vasavai for fifty-nine years, and he has a sign, "Fighting for Water," and he's in front of Sacramento, and here I am. Been seven years, I'm gonna go do the same thing. And it's like, you know, when we then went down to Long Beach from, uh, Tohonen up, I asked the person right there at the NPM, "Hey, how do you guys are keeping this green? You guys don't have, no, no, the property allows us to. We have to keep it green." And it's funny that we can't. So, please, people, let's, let's start writing Sacramento, no matter what it is, we have to move forward.
Okay.
One more announcement.
Oh, we got it up, I didn't even notice.
The mayor's item for the, "In God We Trust" is finally over the crest for the city of Kalinga.
It's the wrong color. It's supposed to be, uh, this, the brown, the bronze color. That can be changed. That's why I didn't notice it. That looks good, yeah. Well, thank you. Thank you, Larry. Okay.
You're welcome.
Next, we'll go to, um, we're gonna have closed session. We have, uh, one item, conference, conference with legal counsel, anticipated lega- litigation, uh, initiation of litigation, uh, print to, uh, five four nine, five six point nine, one case. Do you think we'll have any announcements?
No.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, guys, for coming tonight. This meeting is adjourned.